Good evening and welcome to the October meeting of the Murfreesboro City School Board. I'd like to ask you to please stand now as Dr. Brown will lead us in a pledge. Followed then by our Mona's followers.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hope you've had time to look over the agenda. Have a motion to approve the agenda as printed.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Rainier. Have a second?
Second.
Mr. Barrett? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you. Dr. Gilbert, communication?
Yes, sir. At this time, I would like to ask Ms. Tara McDougall to come forward, please. Ms. McDougall is the Executive Director of the Discovery Center. We have a tremendous partnership there. Everything from the Me and My Dad Fair to the Healthy Me, Healthy You, to the Hispanic Celebration, to Project Wet being in the ESP after-school program, but especially the STEAM bus. And some of you saw that downstairs, outside, and so I just want to thank her for being here tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Gilbert. Good evening, Board. As I'm sure you know, the escalating importance of STEM education is critical to the prosperity of our country, which places demands on an educated workforce to be able to meet pressing, science career needs, and ensure economic development, and even improve human health. Discovery Center's strategic plan addresses the urgency of scientist and educator collaborations resulting in our STEAM bus and super-science program, which what is referred to as equity of access to authentic, hands-on, inquiry-based, science education for elementary-age students. We are beginning our sixth year of our super-science program for 4th graders with the city school system. It began at Bradley and Hobgood Schools. Almost two years ago, I had a very inspiring meeting with Dr. Gilbert and the creative genius Gary Anderson. We had approached them in an initial meeting to discuss a grant that we were submitting and wanted to expand our super-science program. It was in this meeting that the idea of a gutted and retrofitted school bus was born. So far this year alone, we have completed 81 visits to 12 schools and 54 classrooms, and we were able to add to the schedule the two new city schools. Our education team is on the road Tuesday through Friday and uses Monday for planning. And by the way, they still have their other jobs back at Discovery Center, onsite field studies and collaborations to manage. The commitment from both Discovery Center and Murfreesboro City Schools is really a model for other systems out there. In fact, I've had several calls from Chattanooga, Wilson County, and others inquiring about this partnership. Dr. Gilbert, Gary Anderson, Sherri Arnett, and Ava and the transportation crew, the admin staff, and all of the 4th grade teachers have worked diligently with us to ensure success and make the following comments a reality, and I just want to share a few teacher comments and a few student comments with you. Comments from the teachers. I absolutely loved the hands-on activities for kids. They were appropriate, and the kids learned and remembered what they were being taught. While reviewing for TCAP, the kids kept saying, "I remember when we did this with Ms. Courtney." The students really enjoyed the hands-on activities. The hands-on activities really kept the students engaged. And the best part from the kids. They let us test out science to see how things work. I like learning different projects to prove an experiment. The best part was the cool experiments. They help you remember stuff better. No report would be complete without all the thank yous to our funders. The STEAM bus is funded in part by a Museums for America grant from the Institute of Museum and Library Services. Matching grants were received from the Jennings and Rebecca Jones Foundation, the Dan and Margaret Maddox Foundation, the Richard Siegel Foundation, and in-kind support was received from, of course, Murfreesboro City Schools, Nissan North America, which by the way, did the dirty job of gutting the bus on the Nissan property, so we're very thankful to them. Corporate Flight Management. This bus was pulled up right beside multimillion-dollar jets, and they were very patient with us while it sat and was being cleaned. And of course, General Mills. Finally, I want to thank our grant writer Jennifer Neal, our designer Miriam Owen, and our education coordinator Courtney Morgan for their tireless hours on this project, and all of our passionate staff who support this mission and this program. And finally, thank the children who through their personal science discovery make our days full of wonder. So thank you all so much for this opportunity. Any questions?
Ms. Smith?
I just think the kids can learn so much by having fun, and y'all are bringing fun into the educational world, and the kids are having a great opportunity to take from the textbooks and have manipulatives to use, you know, to really carry out what they're learning. And thank you so much. Y'all have done this free of charge to our kids, which is fabulous, but I really appreciate all of your devotion. You brought, like, how many people did you bring to show off your STEAM bus test? I mean, that's a lot of commitment for you to come at night.
Well, and they weren't even asked. I mean, they all volunteered and wanted to be part of this, and I myself have gone on one of these. I guess I was at Bradley School, and I forget the other school I went to, but it was unbelievable. It was really an emotional experience seeing the passion in the kids' eyes when they could be on there and share their discoveries, so.
Well, the Discovery Center is a jewel for Murfreesboro, but for you to extend it and put it on wheels is just amazing, so thank you all for doing that.
Thank you, and thank you for the time tonight.
Thank you so much, Tara.
Don't you have part of your staff with you tonight?
I do.
Would you introduce them, please?
I would love to. Okay, so we have Meredith Hillary, who has been part of our super-science team and has traveled on the STEAM bus. And then Jennifer Neal in the middle wrote the grant, and by the way, this was probably a total of $300,000 in grant money. That's a big deal. And then Miriam Owen, I call her our Irish princess, is the designer of this bus, and this was the first time she's ever tackled a project like this, and she's done an amazing job with it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Phillips?
Ms. McDougall, I just wanted to say thank you, and I hope that we can come out and tour with Murph and see some of the exciting things you're doing. Your staff is always awesome to work with whenever we come out there, so thank you so much.
We're expecting Murph.
Okay.
Dr. Gilbert?
Yes. I'd like for Kristy Mall and also Christina Maddox and Lisa Trail to come forward, please, at this time. And Lisa, I'm going to leave this to you, but this is a special, special event.
Okay, thank you. It is an honor for me tonight to stand up here. This is actually Kristy's night, and we want to celebrate her. Kristy was recognized two weeks ago as the Tennessee Association for Gifted Teacher of the Year, and that is quite the honor. She found it out among her peers. I understand that she was receiving the award, she kept thinking, "Hmm, that sounds a little bit like me. That sounds a little bit more like me." And I think she leaned to the person next to her and said, "I think it's me." And he looked at her and said, "No, I think it's me." So for Kristy, Tennessee Teacher of the Year for the Tennessee Association of Gifted, so congratulations. We are so proud you're part of our district. Christina, do you want to say anything besides yay?
I can just let you know that Kristy Mall is a great example of the caliber of teachers that we have at Discovery. She is an exemplar for gifted education and is a resource for all of our teachers at Discovery, and a resource for me as well as one of the administrators there. She just is a wealth of knowledge for those students that we serve at Discovery, and we're honored and privileged to have her with us.
Also, I think several of you already know this, but we did receive our official recognition from the state. Let's just feel like this. Yep, we have it. So Discovery School, once again, sorry about that, was recognized as a reward school for the 2013-14 year. So this is the third year for Discovery School to get this recognition, and we're very proud of all that they're doing at Discovery School. So there you go. Your Discovery School in action.
And I just want to say it is because of the teachers like Ms. Mall and our precious students like Helen sitting over here that earn this reward for us each and every year. Thank you.
You should probably have Helen. All right, I got it.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies. Yes. Thank you so much, ladies, and congratulations, Kristy. It was neat because I'd gotten a text from Leah, because Leah and Kristy were both at the gifted conference, and she just wrote me and said, "She got it," in big exclamation points. And then, as Kristy said, I talked to her, and she said, "I kept sitting there, and they kept describing, and I kept thinking, 'That sounds like me.'" So congratulations, Kristy. Also, we would like to congratulate Brenda Dale and also Kelly Kleppinger, who awarded a grant to bring Nashville Opera's Jack and the Beanstalk to Mitchell-Nelson. We would like to congratulate Kimberly Osburn, who has been recommended to be appointed by the State Board of Education to the math advisory team for grades K through 6 to help develop the new standards. This is the governor's initiative that you probably have read about. Also this week, we learned that Terrence Haynes, who is an Assistant Principal at Mitchell-Nelson, and also Siobhan Davis-Lewis have been selected, and this just happened a day ago, they have been selected to look at the social studies standards and the items for the state testing. So we congratulate those employees. We would like to congratulate also our City School Board members who have achieved various levels of boardmanship, and these awards were handed out at the Fall Regional TSBA meeting, and those were Butch Campbell, who received Level 4 boardsmanship, Nancy Rainier achieved Level 2 boardsmanship, Jared Barrett achieved Level 2 boardsmanship, and Collier Smith has achieved Level 1 boardsmanship. So congratulations to all of you for that work. And I'm going to call Lisa Trail to the microphone one more time. She is standing in for Alan Bozeman tonight, and we have an exciting announcement tonight.
We do. I am standing in for Alan. Alan is, as you know, is the Communications Director for the City of Murfreesboro, so I get to take his place for just a few minutes. Alan, sorry, he can't be here because this really does relate to City TV and the great staff here. And I'm going to just read a little bit of what Alan wrote for me. "Murfreesboro Communications Department, City TV, recently participated in the annual National Government Television Programming Awards Competition organized by the National Association of Telecommunications Officers and Advisors." That's big. And can I stop here, because I'd like to ask Ms. Phillips if she would join me, because this is about you, Ms. Phillips? So our friends at City TV brought home several awards, and they always do. They do such a great job here. There's such a great staff that work with. But one of the awards this time, and you didn't bring Murph with you, included an honorable mention for the children's program Adventures in Murfreesboro. So congratulations. We're so proud of what you do with him and all the things you do from Discovery School to all of our schools. As you know, Adventures in Murfreesboro is produced by school board member Nancy Phillips. She works directly with City TV and all the schools and everybody around. I think you go pretty much, if there's a child to be had, you are at the air with Murph, and you tell the story of our schools and across the city. So congratulations to you, congratulations to City TV, and congratulations to Murph. I hope you keep telling those stories for us. Now, as I read this, I think that you know what this means, but I am supposed to say, "You the bunny." So congratulations, Ms. Phillips.
Thank you. I won't say something. Just let me. Well, shucks, y'all. And I just want to take just a moment and say thank you. First to Mr. Bozeman, who has the medical thing with his family and couldn't be here tonight, but he was very generous over 10 years ago when we first broached him with this idea, and he was one of the yes people, people that are willing to say yes to new ideas. But I have to give a great, big, huge shout-out to our wonderful Director of Schools, Dr. Linda Gilbert, because over 10 years ago, when I first brought her this idea, this was brand-new in our community, and she took it, she ran with it, she helped, and she has been nothing but an inspiration for Adventures in Murfreesboro ever since. And really, thank you so much, Dr. Gilbert.
Thank you, Nancy.
Appreciate that. Also, I have to take a moment and thank the tremendous support we've had from the community, whether it's a local, regional, or state, national leader. They have generously donated. Everyone who comes on our show donates their time. Many of you have been awesome guests on the show, and if not you, then a relative, and if we haven't gotten close enough, we're going to come get you and ask you to be a part of Adventures in Murfreesboro. And to the principals and each building principal being so supportive, and the exciting things that we get to show. I'm so grateful for the exciting things that we get to showcase that is happening in our community and in our classrooms and with our kids, and that's what this is really all about. So I'm humbled to be up here tonight because it's not me. It's all these awesome people, and of course, our great director, Mr. John Paget, who works tirelessly for Adventures in Murfreesboro, and all the rest of the staff at City Channel 3. So thank you very much.
We have one more congratulations to give, and this occurred last night, as a matter of fact, but Robin Newell was selected to be part of the roundtable. The Secretary of Education, Arnie Duncan, was in town at the lead conference in Nashville, and there were several, not a lot, but several principals who were asked to share their ideas with him, so I do want to acknowledge Robin because she was one of the few that was selected for that, and I think that's quite an honor for Murfreesboro City Schools for her to have been selected. John Pittard would like to thank the many donors who helped with their OVAAS community kickoff. We have Textbook Brokers, TDK Construction, Accordant Technology, Unique Dental Care, Tenpenny Heat and Air, Jackson Construction, Rick Hardisty, and Louis Baker. And Community Outreach would like to thank Second Harvest Food Bank for assisting us in meeting the needs of our students. We started this year with sending out about 190 bags of food per week, and we're now at 350 bags, and that is through the efforts of Second Harvest, so we thank them for their partnership. And also for those who come each week and help us with packing the backpacks, and of course, to Greg for his leadership in that. Community Outreach would also like to thank United Way and the Hometown Huddle Groups. And these groups, my understanding is, really have worked with us in a lot of different ways, but some of the ways would have to do with really refurbishing the playgrounds, and there have been many other things that they did, but City Auto, working with John Pittard, Amazon, working with Reeves Rogers, Bob Parks, working with Mitchell-Nelson, and General Mills, working with Scales. And while I'm at it, I want to really give kudos to United Way. They have done an amazing job this year, reaching out to the schools and talking with us, working with us. As you know, there were several school supplies that were sent out by them, and also they had a night where teachers could come and get supplies for their classrooms, so I really do want to give kudos to United Way for their work. Community Outreach would also like to thank Publix for their donation of supplies. Mitchell-Nelson would like to thank Bob Parks Realty and Agent Sennett P. for donating 40 pumpkins for the annual Classroom Pumpkin Decorating Contest. Mitchell-Nelson would also like to thank Philip O'Reilly at NUCS for their generous donation to the school. They would also like to thank Dr. Brown and Kathy Farrell with the Mobile Health Unit for conducting free sports physicals for students in September. And I do know in talking with our folks in the city schools what that meant for so many of our students, so I want to thank Dr. Brown and also Kathy, who's been, Kathy's been an amazing friend for a long time and their work that they have done for children with the sports physicals. And then finally, we would like to thank the City Schools Foundation. Several of you tonight were able to attend the ceremony at the McPhee's Home where the grants were awarded. I want to thank Dr. McPhee and Liz McPhee for always hosting that celebration and being so generous with their home, and also, a lot of the money that was raised this year was because we honored them last year. And also, I would like to thank David LaRoche, who is the Foundation President, for his work. So thank you very much, City Schools Foundation, for awarding over $50,000 in grants to our teachers. They just go straight to the classroom. The teachers have the ideas for how to use what they get, and it's just pretty amazing what is brought to our district because of that foundation. And those are your communication items.
Thank you, ma'am, very much. Consent items? Have a motion to approve consent items?
So moved.
Dr. Brown, thank you. Ms. Phillips, thank you. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you. Action items?
Okay, the first item that you have before you tonight is a revision to board policy IS-5 textbook selection and adoption. This is being brought to you on first reading tonight. This policy has been revised in light of some changes to Tennessee Code Title 49, Section 6, Part 22. These revisions to the state law actually take effect on January the 1st of 2015, so it was important that we get this revised policy before the board so that it is in place prior to January 1st of 2015. With the revisions to the law, they are requiring each board to appoint a textbook review committee, and they did allow some flexibility where boards and school systems can have a textbook review committee based on grade or subject matter or groups of grades or subject matters. So there is that flexibility that Dr. Gilbert can bring a recommended committee, textbook review committee, to you based on grade or subject matter or groups of grades. They do require that such committees encompass a teacher or parents with children currently enrolled in the school system at the time that they're appointed to the board, and it also allows for boards to appoint experts in the grade level or subject matter field for the textbooks or instructional materials that are being reviewed. However, those experts will not have a voting authority on the committee. And the director is to serve as an ex officio member of all committees but is not a voting member, and the state law requires the committee members to swear to an oath. Also, under the state law, once the committees and the board adopt these textbooks, then that list is going to be placed on the website for people to see, and also, it has to be submitted to the Commissioner of the Tennessee Department of Education.
Okay. You need a vote on that tonight?
Yes, please, for first reading.
Do we have any discussion or do we have a motion to approve on first reading IS-5? Butch?
I've just got a couple of questions.
All right, let me see if we get a motion first, Jared, okay?
All right.
Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Ms. Phillips, thank you, a second?
Second.
Dr. Brown, thank you. All right, now, Mr. Barrett?
Okay. How is this different from our current policy, like major differences or?
Really, really, what I consider to be the major difference is that you do have the stipulation of parents with children. So the process is essentially the same, but that is really the major. There may be a couple of others, for examples, all committee members shall be voting members, but really, that's the primary difference.
And a couple of other questions ahead. Line 3, since you were mentioning grade level and subject matter, maybe we should switch that to or, so you have that flexible, you know, grade level or subject field or subject matter? Right now, it's both, you know, if you leave the and in there? But, so we're going to have a committee per grade level?
No, I don't foresee really a lot of change in this, and I would defer to Karen Hawkins because she would be the one that would be handling this, but I really don't see a lot of change. We have always, and I think that's something the public needs to understand, is textbooks have always been decided by teachers. There's always been a committee of teachers, and I still foresee that. The difference would be that on that committee, you would also be required now to have at least one parent that would be on that committee. So when you look at the makeup of the committee, and basically what it will look like is that the teachers and the parent would review that, and then they will choose what they feel like aligns best with the standards, is the most usable for the teachers and would be the best for the children, and then we would come with that recommendation to you just as we have in the past.
And then line 30, it's mentioning a review period by examination for public. When is that, and how long is it?
We would have to set that once that happens, and so basically, we would have those texts, any material, of course, is available for public, but here, that stipulation, we would have them at the central office during the review period.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Smith?
So really, how many options are presented to the committee? I mean, if they're following the curriculum?
It varies. It's going to, what you will have, Karen, if you want to come explain that, that would be great, but what you will have are recommended textbooks that are, they're vetted already at the state level by teachers, by administrators there, and then we will have a list that we can choose from. We can go outside of that list, but we have a recommended list, right?
Yes. Typically, when we adopted math in the past few years, or even when we adopted reading as well, I usually have representatives from K-2, from 3-5, and then grade 6, because grade 6 is a separate adoption, because typically, we adopt a middle-school text for 6th grade. So usually, you have a body of teachers, but then you have representatives in all those grade levels, because that's typically how they pick the textbooks. For K-5, for a subject like math, if we have an appropriate text that would go K-5, that would be our preference, but sometimes, we don't have that, so it just depends.
So in 6th grade, do we have any coordination with the county schools, since all of our kids would be after 6th grade going to the county schools?
We do. We talk to them, you know, every time we've selected the same, we selected the same math textbook in grade 6. We didn't in reading, but we did in math. We talked last year when we were looking at social studies as well. So we try to do that. In the past, the law said that schools of a certain size, smaller districts, would go with what the larger district went, so we would go with what Rutherford County would go with. That has been removed from the law, but we certainly would want to have those discussions with them so that we would try to give our students the best advantage with that.
Great, thank you.
Ms. Rainier?
Ms. Baker, you did say that this came pretty much verbatim from the state, that they added the parent representative?
Yes.
Okay, so we can't take that away?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. King?
Just, I guess since I'm new to this, is, are we presented six books, and this committee whittles it down to three, for example, and these three books are then left at the central office for the review as in line 29 and 30? Is that how that works?
Typically, what we do is we order everything that is on, for preview, everything that's on the state adoption list, and then we have all of those books at the district office. Now, what we do during the process is we narrow those so that we can concentrate, we have, you know, we look at them with a broad brush, and then we narrow them to a few choices, and then we go back and we look at those deeply. Now, last year with social studies, we only had one choice for K-3. We didn't have any other to choose from. It was either that one, or we went outside of what the adoption. And we probably will have some books that are outside what's on the state list, because some vendors didn't have their materials ready when the state requested for them to submit their materials. So we would look at those as well.
Okay.
But it varies from year to year, and I'm, we order the textbooks, the sample books to see, and we get them at different times. Sometimes, we have them at the beginning of January. Last year, we didn't get them until closer end of February, so it just depends on when we get the books.
So you order the samples at the same time, but different publishers send them to you just whenever?
Yep.
Wow.
That's the way it is.
Interesting.
It's the way it's gone in the past.
Ms. Rainier?
What is our? What is our adoption this year?
It's math.
Math. And is, is it not true that if we're happy with what we have, we can keep it and don't have to purchase new?
Well, we, we are, we are asked to adopt, but then, it always comes to you in the form of a budget. And so, the decision is to make whether or not we will buy those books or not. But it depends on, a lot depends this year on the standards. And this review of the standards that the state's doing, it may not happen until the summer, and we're looking at a math textbook that we want to, we're going to want to keep for 6 years, which gives us a little bit of pause, I will say.
It will be quite difficult.
Ms. Phillips?
I was just going to say that for me, it's always been a matter of relying and trusting the expertise of our curriculum professionals, because, you know, you are the ones, you and your team are the people who know, and are, you're looking far ahead, you know, at the things like standards and changes coming possibly in the state, and one thing and another. And, and of course, we always keep an eye to the budget, too. But at the same time, it's been my, my policy just to rely on your recommendation, so.
Well, it's our, my responsibility to make sure that the teachers understand their choices and what the standards are, and then they actually make that decision.
The teachers make the decision?
They do make the decision.
And how, so how does that happen? Do they?
They vote.
So as a, as a group, as a whole group, all the teachers vote, or just a representative?
Just the committee.
Just the committee?
Just the committee, because we want to make sure that they have all the information that they need to make a good decision on it. Now, they, they may have samples in their buildings, and teachers can look at those samples and then give input to the voting committee, but the vote, the committee is the actual, does the actual voting.
And how are the members selected to be on the committee?
It depends. Usually, it's working with the principals, talking to the principals, and getting recommendations for teachers that are strong in a particular content area that demonstrate solid instruction, and that are going to be looking for quality materials. So that's how they're selected.
Sounds good, sounds good, thank you.
Ms. Rehneer?
In years past, many years past, there was a set of preview materials for each grade level in every building. But my understanding is, that's not the case anymore, or?
The state doesn't give us quite as many to choose, as many samples as they used to.
So, I have heard teachers say it's difficult to make a decision when they all have to come to central office to find those materials.
Right, well, but ultimately, the decision is made by that committee that's representing. And I have representatives from every building that are on the committee.
Right, but if, if they want to-
For preview purposes.
Right, if they want to get an idea of what their grade level, let's say-
Sure.
-is looking or would prefer, it would be difficult when you've got 500 teachers that have to come to central office. So if there's any way to get more preview copies, it would be great.
We now have all of the books online, so a teacher can log into there, and we send that information out to the teachers, so they can actually go online, look at the textbooks, see what the resources are.
That's great.
So it makes it a lot easier than, you know-
Than having to physically come up. Perfect, that's good, great, thank you.
And that would be a great resource for our public as well.
Yes, great, thanks.
It's good to know.
Mr. Barrett?
After going over this and hearing some of the suggestions, I'd like to add a line after line 30. Just make the public aware when the dates and textbooks are going to be made available for review, to the, you know, just making an announcement, something along those lines.
Okay.
Remembering back on the days when, this is a huge responsibility, and there's a lot of work for every person that's on that committee. And we want, I want to encourage the teachers in each building to make sure that they talk to those committee members and look at those different textbooks. Because I can remember having the vendor, the textbook rep, would come by and leave a set of whatever we were looking for, almost in every building, in the grade levels. So if that's not done, of course, they could go online today, but I really encourage those classroom teachers that are not on the committee to really become involved, because we are really looking at some probable changes in standards coming up in the next couple of years, I think. Okay?
That may impact our recommendations.
That's right. And Mr. Odom and I were to discuss that this week.
I'm sure that you have. All right, we have a, a motion to approve policy with those that made the motion and second. Do you accept, or do we have to have a vote to accept Mr. Barrett's?
Yes.
Addition?
If the, if the person that made the motion in the second accepted, then-
Okay.
I accept it.
You accept it? Okay, all right, both have accepted. All right, those in favor of passage on this policy, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposition? Thank you.
The next item you have on your agenda is review and consideration of the revisions to the Murfreesboro City Code section dealing with Murfreesboro City School Board. That's found at Chapter 25 of the Murfreesboro City Code. And I had sent the board members this information much in advance of the board meeting, so you would have time to review it. Some of the main revisions that I've made are in Section 25-1. The language was added acknowledging that the city council may appoint a city council member to serve as a liaison to the board. In Section 25-3, the language was revised to reflect the change in the city election cycle from the 3rd Tuesday in April to the August general election. In Section 25-4, a revision was made to allow a vacancy on the board to be filled by appointment by the city council, and then such person shall hold office on an interim basis until the next election. This language is now consistent with the Tennessee state law regarding elections and replacement of members midterm. Section 25-7 was revised to allow two regular board meetings a month, as the board has previously voted on in prior meetings. And Section 25-9 was revised to state that the proposed budget shall show expenditures for the school for the ensuing fiscal year rather than calendar year, since we do develop our budgets on fiscal years. And Section 25-12 and 25-25 were deleted because these sections are already covered by state law. Are there any questions?
Ms. Baker, thank you for doing that. I know it was a lot of work to make those revisions, and I know the board appreciates it.
Uh huh.
Do we, we don't need to vote on this, do we?
Yes, I would, I would like the board to vote and approve these revisions, and then I will take the board's recommendation to the city council. And that way, the city council will know that the school board has reviewed and agreed with these revisions.
Oh, we need to, we need to, to vote first, and then they will vote on it?
Yes.
Okay, well, I move that we accept these changes.
All right. Motion by Ms. Rehneer, second by Ms. Smith. Any other discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, reports and information?
Yes, Mr. Anderson?
Yes, the first information for you is the audit firm consideration. It is, every year, we have to let the state know who will be the audit firm to audit our accounting books. And at this time, the Crosland Associates contract ends when they turn in your report for the annual audit of 13, 14, so we need to name a firm for 14 and 15. We can continue with the current contractor we have and negotiate a new contract, or we can get a different, a different firm, if that's the will of the board. Being that it's a professional service, such as engineers, architects, lawyers, and orders, we do not need to go out to a formal bid process. So what I was looking for, some direction from the board, is how you would like us to proceed on securing an audit firm for our 14, 15 school year.
Ms. Phillips?
I'd be interested, Mr. Anderson, in your input on this matter, because, of course, you and your team work very closely with the auditors.
Yes, thank you. We are comfortable working with any audit firm, but we have worked with this particular firm for a few years now. They, any audit firm will follow the same rules and regulations established by standards of accounting, also the state's standards. We are audited by the, by the federal government through the IDEA and title funds, and we're audited by the USDA, so we are audited a lot. We are fine going either way. We do have a comfort level in the fact that they know what, where, we know what to pull for them, when to pull it, and have it ready. And it's kind of expedited our process under the current firm. But again, it's up to the board if you want us to look to an outside, another organization.
Mr. Barrett?
So you said a few years, how many, how many years do you think?
I think it's been 8 years that I'm, that I am aware of.
Okay, 8 years. So, I'd like to, I'd like to move that we look for a new auditing firm, you know, we're stewards of taxpayers' money. I think a fresh pair of eyes on our books probably would, would be a good idea at this point, since it's been 8 years. Maybe, not that I'm saying Crosland is getting a little comfortable, but, you know, I think a new firm might come in and see something different. Maybe not, but it's always good to have that second opinion.
Is that a motion by you, or still in discussion?
Still in discussion, I'll, but I wanted to put it out there. I'm in favor of that.
Ms. Smith?
Pretty much along the same thought. We have, our schools, we have no money. We need to analyze everything. So, I'm not saying that we don't go with Crosland, I'm saying we find out how much our bills cost would be the way I would go.
Ms. Rehneer?
Kind of going along both lines, I guess. I like the fact that we have this rapport with them, and they know the way you do things. I don't know that that's good, bad, or indifferent, but I know that is a comfort level. My question is, what do we pay them? Do you know offhand?
I've got the budget number here. It's, it's like $48,000 a year, but let me, let me double check.
Okay, so, that's close enough. You don't have to go any further. And are they local?
They're out of Nashville.
That's what I thought, okay. My suggestion would kind of go along with the others, that maybe, I know you don't have to put it out for bids, but maybe get a couple of estimates. And I, I'm all for supporting local folks. I'm sure we have accounting firms in Murfreesboro, unless there's some reason we can't use them being in Murfreesboro. So, that, that would be my thought.
Okay. Ms. Phillips?
I was just going to feel the need to reiterate, we've always had a clean audit, just for everybody to know that. We've always had a clean audit, and I'm very proud of that. And I can see, I can certainly understand wanting to get some idea, ballpark ideas of what other companies would charge. Since we've always had a clean audit, and there's never been a question, I'm not sure what fresh eyes would bring to it, but I'm always open to new ideas. I also, though, want, when I think about our, our finance team and the time that they have to expend on these audits, I think if there is something that expedites their efforts, there's something to be said about that. You know, there's something to be said about their time and their effort, and how quickly we get these reports, so that we have time to review them, and one thing and another. So, you know, I don't think it'll hurt to get new ideas, I mean, get, get an idea about new, the, the cost other companies would charge, but I still think it's, there's something to be said about, you know, a working rapport and relationship between companies that have been with you a long time.
Ms. Barrett?
Well, I'd like to make a motion that we go with another audit, like, get a couple bids for a different auditing firm, someone local besides Crosland. Just, again, get a fresh pair of eyes. I realize we've had clean audits, and I appreciate that. I appreciate the hard work from our financial staff, but it's always good to have that fresh pair of eyes, especially if, if you expedite something, sometimes you make mistakes. I'm not saying we're making mistakes, but sometimes that happens. So, I'd like to make that motion that we go for another auditing firm.
Dr. Brown?
I guess my question to that would be, if we get other estimates, and they're substantially more than what we've been paying, do we want to pay more money?
The quality.
So, I, I would not support a statement saying that we're going to go with a different firm. I think it's reasonable to get some estimates, but if we're getting a good service from this company, and they have a very reasonable bid, then I have no objections to staying with them.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second? Let's go that route first, I think is the direction we need to go. Do we have a second to Mr. Barrett's motion?
Would you reset your motion, please, Mr. Barrett?
That we go with another auditing firm besides Crosland, and get other bids locally, try to get local, local bids?
That's almost-
Oh, is it 2 or 3? Okay.
Let me understand what you're saying.
Use a differing auditing firm, basically.
Are you saying to look at other firms? Are you saying to find another firm?
Find another firm, there we go.
Do you think, find another firm and not go with Crosland, that's your motion?
Yes.
All right, do we have a second to that motion? All right, motion fails due to lack of a second. Now, do we have, do we have a motion on the floor by anybody pertaining to this? Ms. Smith?
I move that we look for costs of other auditing firms, any auditing firm, including Crosland.
I second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second to look at other firms. Would you like to designate how many other firms?
Let me leave that up to Mr. Anderson.
Okay.
He can, he can shop.
All right, all right. We have a motion on the floor to open up and look at other auditing firms, including Crosland. We have a second. Now, do we have discussion on that motion? Call the roll, please, ma'am.
Mr. Barrett?
No.
Dr. Brown?
Aye.
Sheriff Campbell, I didn't mean to skip you.
Aye.
Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
Ms. Rehneer?
Aye.
And Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Well, the ayes have it. We have 1 no and 6 ayes.
Good. Motion passed. Mr. Anderson, then if you will, please look and see, get us some other bids on audit firms, and we'll leave the number up to your discretion.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you. All right, Community Leaders Network?
Yes, I'd like to, again, call Lisa Trail to the, to the podium, please, to present this. This is something that I've asked her to work on. This is really at the request of the board, in an effort with the master plan to reach out to the community and to have a, basically, what would be an information gathering and also advocacy group kind of combination. So I'll, I'll leave it to you to explain.
Okay. We have had several requests from the board members to have a community group. We are beginning our Community Leader Network on Monday with a 7:30 a.m. meeting. It will have 4 meetings this year before the end of this actual school year. So, it begins in November, and then every other month until we dismiss the school year. The focus was really to find people throughout our community. Some have students in our school district, some do not. Some have past students, some have never had a student in our school district. We have a group of about 15 to 20 individuals to bring together to talk about what they expect from our city schools, and what we can expect from them. So we really did look at getting outside of our circle of friends and reaching out to members of the community. In fact, I've had a couple of them call me and ask, was I supposed to receive this invitation? Because they had not ever been affiliated with Murfreesboro City Schools. And I said, absolutely, that's what we want. We want honest feedback, we want a very good community outreach feedback. So we're looking forward to kicking that off. It will really be talking about how we can work together, not just a report out of what Murfreesboro City Schools is doing. That's not what we want to do. We don't want to just lecture them of what we're doing. We want to get feedback on what they're hearing, and what they're seeing, and what they're expecting for, from our kindergarteners through our 6th graders.
And we would ask-
to just lecture them of what we're doing. We want to get feedback on what they're hearing, and what they're seeing, and what they're expecting for, from our kindergarteners through our sixth graders.
And we would ask, Mr. Campbell, that we do have a board member, if you would appoint a board member, please.
I, I would like to ask Ms. Phillips if she would serve on that committee.
Why, thank you, Mr. Campbell. I would love to. It's right up my alley.
Will you, Ms. Phillips?
It's right up my alley.
And I do appreciate the board's suggestion on this. I think this will, will give us a, you were talking about fresh set of eyes. I think this will give us some different eyes, and I think it will be very beneficial, both to the school district and also the community. So I, I appreciate your, your encouragement of that. I think you'll be pleased with that.
Thank you very much.
The personnel updates, the revenue and expenditure and attendance report. Mr. Anderson?
Yes, the personnel update is in your, in your packet. If we could go to the finance section, it's, the pages are, have been entered reverse. If I could get you to go to the third page and work backwards, where it has comparison of budget totals. At this point, our net income through the 25th percentile. Yes, ma'am?
I'm sorry to interrupt you. Do you remember me asking to have these lines numbered?
Yes, you did.
So I could quickly get to it, because you're really fast, because of course, you know these backwards and forwards, but maybe next time?
I'm sorry.
Okay, okay, okay. Okay, thank you. Now, which line are you on? I'm slow.
Well, I'm going to the first page where it's, where it just has two lines, total income and total expenditures.
Okay.
It's, it's reversed in your, in your board packet.
I got it.
This is the 25th percentage of the year through this, through the end of September. We are, our net income is negative $2,118,000. Last year at this time, we were in negative $1,804,000. As you know, when we added the extra teachers and things like that, our number is going to be negative at this time. The next page on it is your revenue page. And on the revenue, the, the good news is that our sales tax collections are up about $120,000, and our other county revenue collections are up approximately $30,000. The rest of the information is flowing right the way we expect it to flow, so we feel pretty good that the sales and prop, I mean, sales tax numbers are up. So that's a good sign. As you can tell, property taxes, which is your first line, have not started to come in yet. They will not hit for another few months before those property taxes start hitting our budget lines. The next page is the expenditure line. I wanted to call your attention to the last line. Title is operating transfers, 99, 100. You'll see a total there of budget of, if you go over to the column that has 2014-15 budget, you'll see a number of 624,000. That is, was in our operating budget up above in, in our maintenance. That is the energy efficiency loans. The city asked us to make it a separate line item, because we pay for the energy efficiency loans based on the savings of our utilities. And they asked us to just account for it in a separate line. So that, that is moved there at the request of the city government. Just so you know, it's, it's, it's no change. It was buried up in the other numbers before. We're at 19% of expenditures, so we feel we're, we're in pretty good shape on our expenditure line. Does anyone have any particular questions about any of the, any of the line items on the expenditures or the revenues? Okay. I see none. If we could go on to the report, the enrollment and attendance report. Good news again is that we continue to have an attendance percentage of 98%. Of our students are coming to school every day.
Woo-hoo.
That is really good, to continue with that number. We are, this, this period ended October 1st, and we are 11 students over where we were at the end of the 20-day period before this, the previous one. So we continue to grow. I got reports today that we added a bunch of students today as well. We'll find out in the next report exactly how many, but they keep coming in. So we're glad to see the growth.
Why today?
I don't know why. They just kind of show up.
That's good. Mama finally got me in the school.
And they don't come as singletons. They come in twos and threes and fours. So it's kind of an interesting one. Our pupil teacher ratio, the section at the very bottom in the middle of the page, our K through 3 is at 19.40. Our 4 through 6 average is at 20.81. Our total district average is 19.9 PTR. Does anyone have any questions about any of these particular schools, lines, capacities?
Dr. Brown?
Just in looking at the individual grades and the individual schools, when you look at fourth grade at Black Fox and overall, those pupil teacher ratios are 25 and 24, respectively. To have 25 students in that grade is tough on a teacher. So if there's anything that the system can do to assist those schools and assist those teachers, I realize it may be hard to hire another teacher, but there are other things that we can do to help them. So I hope that we're doing that.
That is one that was brought, there, there are times when we leave things to principals' discretion. With, with that particular school, I had brought that to the attention of the principal, that they could shift some of the lower grades. Their choice was not to do that, so I'll leave it to their discretion with, with that. They know their, they know their schools, and I have to trust them on that one.
Ms. Phillips?
But Dr. Gilbert, we can support what those classrooms with additional EAs, possibly?
Well, it would be easy enough to have shifted a teacher, say, out of first grade, and to move and would have been within those, would have been reasonable to do. Then you would have had a, a better PTR there for that particular fourth grade, for whatever reason that was chosen not to.
I, I understand, and I, I support that principle. I'm just wondering, on whatever their choice is, they know their school. You're right. But I was wondering if we can support them with additional help with EAs, or possibly?
We can look at that. I think that, that I would be hard pressed to, to make that call, because I could say that, that there would be other classes that would be in the same situation. I think, I think, again, I would leave that to the principals' discretion to make that choice, because when they know that they can drop that pupil teacher ratio, there evidently is a reason there. I will go back and talk with him. My guess is, he would be hesitant to do that. But, but in, in a case like that, when there's been made, they've been made aware of that situation, then I have to leave it to them to have talked with their teachers to see what's, what's going on there.
But do they have the flexibility to add an additional?
I would not want to do that, because then I am put in a position where I would need to do that. There are other, there are other classrooms that would need the same, the same kind of support, or more.
Right, right.
Okay. Ms. Anderson?
Yes, sir.
Are there any other questions on the report?
I have one question. I, I don't know much about this. It's just a vague question. I know that flu season is ahead of us. Does our, our bus, our health bus, does, do the, are they allowed to give flu shots to kids?
Do you know if that discussion has been had yet? Typically, we have that discussion with, with, they have in the past, I know.
They have.
I actually have a meeting with Hope Clinic tomorrow or the next day, so I'll find out.
That would be great to know. Yeah.
And can teachers get flu shots from 1098 stations?
We have, we have made that arrangement in the past, and I, I have not checked on that this year, but I, I will find out about that.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes, they are, they are going to have flu shots going to the school.
Okay, good.
That should impact our, our attendance, I was thinking.
All right. Other business come before the board?
Mr. Campbell?
Mr. King?
I'd, I'd simply like to mention, I don't know if everybody saw the Daily News Journal today, a very nice article written by Melan Raglan Hutchins about Bradley Academy and the drama department. They need $5,000 to help make a trip to Atlanta, I think, in January of this year. They're rehearsing for Peter Pan in March. In talking with the teacher, Ms. Isom, of all the schools in the United States, only 3% of the schools have a drama department, and we've got one. And if you don't have it, if you have not read the article in Daily News Journal, I encourage you to go get it. Thanks, Melan, for giving them the publicity. They were trying to raise money, I think, two Saturdays ago at Sam's. And, you know, going back to Mr. Anderson's numbers, believe it or not, there's 57 days till Christmas, to shop for Christmas. And if you really want to help these schools, you'll go out and do your shopping in Murfreesboro in Rutherford County. And if you want to help Murfreesboro, you'll do business with locally owned businesses. And I wanted to bring that up.
Thank you, sir. I agree. Anything else come before the board tonight? Do I hear a motion from anyone to adjourn?
So moved.
By Mr. Barrett. Do I have a second?
Second.
Dr. Brown, Mr. King, both second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
We're done.